Good evening and welcome to the December 18th meeting of the City Council. Please stand for the invitation by Reverend Bud Ginger, the pastor of Church and Masters United Church of Christ, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Wise and loving Creator, we gather this evening to tend to the day-to-day concerns of the city. We ask that you be in our listening and in our speaking. We ask that you provide a wise presence in the decisions that are made this evening. And we ask that this wisdom guide the council in its leadership in considering the needs of all the people of this city. Creator God, even as His body tends to the routine tasks, petitions, and requests of the citizens of Hickory, our thoughts and prayers go out to the men, women, and children of Newtown, Connecticut, as well as other places in this country that have experienced the tragedy of violence. Though we may not be touched as deeply as those parents who have lost children, though we may not grieve as those who have lost friends or spouses, nevertheless, our prayers go out to them, our hearts full of compassion that echoes the deep and loving compassion you have for all your people. And so we give you thanks for those men and women here who serve this city and who act as your hands in protecting its citizens. These things we lift up to you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. Obviously, I'm not Mayor Wright. He was on vacation, and I hope he did come back sometime to come here. Also, Councilman Daniel Seeger is not here tonight. All the other council members are present. I want to start off tonight with a special greeting. I'll ask the President Darryl Rogers from the Hickory J.C.'s to take a look at this. Who else is here from the J.C.s? Any other folks? Raise your hand. That's your audience. That's my posse. That's your posse, okay. Well, I don't know how many of you had a chance or attended the Christmas parade here last Saturday, but I think about everybody in Hickory was there.
And plus more.
That was the largest crowd that I can ever recall at a Christmas parade in Hickory. It was just tremendous ongoing there, and I just want to thank you for that. And we've got this proclamation now I want to read to you. It says, "Proclamation Hickory J.C.s: Whereas the Hickory J.C.s have organized the Hickory Holiday Parade for almost twenty years, and whereas the parade is an enormous project and planning begins six months prior to the parade date, and it takes dozens of Hickory J.C.s to make the event a success; and whereas the parade brings people from across the entire community together, whereas this is about seventy -- this year about seventy-five fested parade entries, including two high school bands, marched the one-mile route. Thousands of spectators of all ages line the streets of downtown Hickory, and many smiles and cheers fill the air. And whereas Mayor Rudy Wright and Hickory City Council appreciates the efforts made by the Hickory J.C.s in organizing the annual holiday parade, which is essential in celebrating Christmas in our community, now therefore I, Mayor Rudy Wright, the City of Hickory, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December the eighteenth, two thousand twelve, as Hickory J.C.'s Day."
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything that the J.C.s do, not only just for the Christmas parade, but all year round throughout our community.
Well, it's our honor that you're so thankful of us because we had our general membership meeting last Friday, the end of your banquet, and part of that banquet is giving our year-end awards, and our general membership votes on all those year-end awards. And we're about fifty-one members this year, and so one of our awards is Community Partner of the Year, and it just so happens that the general membership unanimously voted the City of Hickory as our Community Partner of the Year.
Well, thank you very much.
I'll tell you why, because with your support with the Easter egg hunt, with the Parks and Rec, to create a lot this year was a great success, with our zombie run again with Parks and Rec, the cooperation with Andrea, and Mandy, and Mick, and City Council has been tremendous with all the other departments, and so we, the J.C.s, appreciate that. You helped us grow this year, and we had a wonderful year, and we're really excited about thirteen and what lies ahead with us in the city. So we thank you as well.
On behalf of the entire City Council, I think you appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move at this time that the council will consider an item not on the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. This motion was made by myself, and it was seconded by Councilman Layle. It's become the council's practice lately to allow any resident of Hickory to speak on any item except for those which will hold on public hearing tonight's agenda. Such remarks be limited to three minutes and subject to normal rules of the decorum. I'd like to make a motion that we allow that to happen tonight. All right? I made the motion, and it is seconded by Councilman Layle. Is there anyone wishing to speak about any items on tonight's agenda excluding those --
Yeah, you actually have to vote on those.
Okay. We'll vote on the first one, on the allowing the -- considering item not on the agenda. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we'll vote on the motion itself, allowing people to speak. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Is there anyone present who would like to speak about an item on tonight's agenda excluding those items that are slated for public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Come forward, please, and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jay Franklin Davis. I'm a citizen all over Hickory, northwest Hickory, east Hickory, and southwest Hickory. First, I'd like to give you a little handout. Yes. Councilmembers, I appreciate your bandwidth, your dress, items of concern on your agenda that you all set to vote upon. I am asking that the budget ordinance amendment, item number two, be removed from consent agenda for further discussion because it does not fit with the parking fund ordinance created by Freeland's Council and City Administration. Allow me to read the ordinance to you that was passed out to you. City of Hickory, resolution: Establishment and Maintenance of a Parking Capital Reserve Fund. Whereas there is a need in the City of Hickory to anticipate future parking capital project needs, and whereas the city must bear the cost of providing adequate parking facilities at a cost unknown. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing board that section one, the governing body hereby creates a capital reserve fund for the purpose of funding future parking facility capital project needs. Section two, this fund will remain an ongoing reserve, and funds will be transferred to the appropriate fund when parking capital project needs arise. Section three, the board will appropriate this fund each fiscal year to parking rentals and parking fines revenue generated. Section four, this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption. And you have the attest and the mayor, Mayor and Mayor. It is my belief and the citizens' for equity in government that this was an issue with the tent construction last year on Union Square. It had nothing to do with parking, so he broke the law that you are sworn to uphold. As section one states, this money is set aside for funding future parking facility capital project needs. This fund was created to increase parking capacity and address its issues, not for the security purposes of Union Square businesses. Let's be honest with these cameras, have a lot more to do with the securing Union Square's private business interests than securing the parking lots associated with Union Square. The businesses on Union Square should address their own security issues like every other private business in Hickory and all other areas of Hickory have to do. We understand the desire for security, but if Union Square businesses want to collectively improve their security, then they should be doing this through the downtime development association. Wasn't that what the entity was created for?
Three minutes.
Now, y'all can go on and unanimously do what you intend to do all along, but thank you for allowing us to go on the record about the continued misappropriation of this fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for your comments. Is there anyone else desiring to speak? I'd ask if there was approval for the minutes to regular meeting of December four, two thousand and one.
I'm ready to start.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Patton, the second by Councilwoman Fox. Vote, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the meeting, section one meeting, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fox, seconded by Councilman Layle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to read funds, adoration, second reading?
Move such.
Second.
Motion was moved by Councilwoman Layle, seconded by Councilwoman Patton. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
The items that you remove, item I two.
Okay. Any other items to be removed? Okay.
Good, the consent agenda be approved except for item I two.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilwoman Lassner, and seconded by Councilman Layle. Mr. Berry?
Item I two is a budget appropriation of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and two dollars of the capital reserve parking fund. Those funds to be moved to the public buildings M and R equipment line item. The budget amendment is necessary to pay for the upgrade of the downtown parking lot camera system. With additional new cameras, the system is outgrown by the infrastructure can support. The upgrade will add storage, increase bandwidth, and upgrade the software platform to offer the modern cameras now installed.
Yeah, I asked that you remove and lighten this, the document that explains that. My understanding, of course, I cannot, and I cannot understand the intent of the council nor the -- that passed this at what day. As for the capital reserve fund, it's clear that it's for parking facility capital projects needs, and I understand that in part parking capital project needs. Part of providing safe parking, I would suggest, is appropriate lighting, appropriate landscaping, appropriate other appropriate features, including cameras. That's part of the property, so I'm going to go on record saying that, and I would -- I need to approve this item I two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Any other items?
Only information allowed is the council and I's report of Mayor Wright's travel to North Carolina, a local municipality's transportation forum, which was held in Raleigh on November fourteenth, September fifteenth.
Under new business, we have four public hearings tonight. Barry, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. The first public hearing is to consider a voluntary annexation of the city-owned property that is located at the corner of Twenty-first Street Northwest and Ninth Avenue Drive Northwest. And I'll ask the city's principal planner, Mr. Cal Wood, to be the incumbent holder and present that heading to council prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor President Davis, with counsel. The added consideration is a question of the City of Hickory to annex one-eight-seven acres of city-owned property, which is located essentially at Twenty-first Street Northwest. The property is actually underneath the existing roadbed. When the city was doing some revisions and some updates to some of the city maps, it was discovered that this piece of property, which is owned by the city, wasn't actually in the city, being that the city purchased the property, and it was not annexed. Originally, it was figured that it was combined with the larger piece of property. Over time, those records are still there, but they just got lost in the shuffle, and we covered this and proceeded to move forward with the annexation of this property. The first map we can't hear is, I'm just going to give you an idea of the jurisdictional boundaries with respect to the property and the area of closure. The piece of property that's located right here on the plane, the blue area is showing the city limits of City of Hickory, spaced further, E.T.J., and just where the red color shows is town long. As you can see, you can see where Reap and Boulevard is actually part of the airport property. In respect to what's going on in the zone, it uses all industrial zoning, airport and all the properties, pretty much a large aviation industry, if you will. With respect to what's going on in the property, you can see there's actually red that I'm near. What the proposal is going to do is offer an annexation of the property and then a formal dedication of the street, which is city property, and dedicates it to the public and use for future purposes. And the city did review all the standards that are applicable for annexations of this nature and found that it was within all boundaries of annexation statutes. And it's not really any services other than maintenance that are normally required for the roadbed, so those are all in place at the same time. With that, I'll close and answer the questions the council may have.
Thanks, sir. All right, this has been advertised as a public hearing, and before we start the public hearing, I'll state the rules for the public hearing. Anyone present that would like to speak concerning the public hearing will be allowed to speak. Those who wish to speak for the proposal will go first. Those wishing to speak against it, depending on the following each side, will be given a total of fifteen minutes. Those opposed will then be given the opportunity to rebuttal for five minutes, and those in favor will be given the opportunity for service for five minutes after that. We've asked that all speakers be respectful of each other and the City Council and our staff, and we ask that the audience refrain from vocal reaction to any speaker coming. I'd ask now if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this proposal. Again, I'm sorry, against the first.
I think you actually have declared a public hearing. I'm asking there's no access.
I declared a public hearing open, and asked if there was anyone that would like to speak against. If there was no one present that asked to speak against, I'd ask if there was anyone present that would like to speak for. For being no one desiring to speak, I've declared a public hearing open, and asked for a motion.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Patton, seconded by Ms. Fox. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Berry, before we move to the next public hearing, the city clerk is informing that she was not able to record y'all's vote on the consent agenda items with the exception of I two and Mr. Myers' motion, so if you want to consider voting on that now, since she didn't call.
All those in favor of consent agenda, including item I two? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next public hearing, I'll ask the city's Public Services Director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, to come to the podium and present a citizen-driven resolution to council to do street improvements along a portion of three oh four and three thirty-six, Tenth Avenue Northeast, petition for curbing gutter.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor President, guests, members of council, this public hearing is a citizen-initiated petition, petition number zero-two-twelve, second one of two thousand and twelve. Petition is for curbing gutter along properties three oh four and three thirty-six, Tenth Avenue Northeast. The south side of the roadway there is a hundred percent petition. Staff would recommend approval of the petition at the consistency of a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Once again, this is a public hearing, and I'd ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak against this proposal.
Mr. Berry, to open the public hearing first.
I declare the public hearing. I hope you're married, not me. I declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak against this proposal. For being no one desiring to speak against, I'd ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak for this proposal. For no one desiring to speak for or against, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Fox, seconded by Mr. Myers. I'd ask if there's anyone. If there's a vote, then all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
The next public hearing, I'll ask Mr. Hanson to come back to the podium. This is another citizen-driven petition process to the sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Again, this is a public hearing for petition zero-three-twelve. It's a sidewalk petition. It's actually one of the same properties as the previous one you just approved. So again, they're looking to curb and go around the sidewalk along a portion of that. It's a hundred percent signatures on the property owners, and staff would recommend approval of it at the consistency of a public hearing.
I declare a public hearing open, and I would ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak against it. No one desiring to speak, I'd ask if there's anyone that would like to speak for it. Again, if there's no one desiring to speak, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, seconded by Mrs. Fox. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, number four.
The last public hearing, this evening, again, I'll ask Mr. Hanson to come to the podium and present a resolution petition to close a portion of Tenth Avenue Place Northeast.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. This is one that the staff received, a petition from the adjoining property owners of an unopened street driveway. It's essentially a very short section of four-hundred block of Tenth Avenue Place Northeast. The two side property owners basically use this as their driveway. It goes essentially one lot deep and then hits a, hits a no piece of property that's fenced off, and that other property had access from the opposite side roadway, if you will, so it doesn't cut any properties off. There's a sketch, I think, on page eighty-eight of your general package, shows sort of general location. It's essentially over there, Hickory High School, basically, water to away. So again, staff would recommend approval of the resolution to close this unopened driveway. It's essentially being used as a driveway for the two adjoining properties.
I understand. Once again, I declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak against this proposal. Again, no one desiring to speak against, I'd ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak for. No one desiring to speak, I close the public hearing, and I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, a motion, I'm sorry, a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fox, seconded by Ms. Patton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that's all the public hearings. A little report. Mayor Wright asked me if I was on his behalf nominating Mr. Dee Yang to the parking regulation. Are there any other nominations?
I have the sidewalk here, um, non-letting cross, he's a person of the election.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'm going to put one vote.
I'll second.
Okay. Both nominations were made. Motion was made by Ms. Patton, seconded by Mr. Layle. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? All right, presentation of the petition request. Have already recognized persons that want to be heard, their names managed, and are nominated?
No.
Here's another person. Mr. Cliff Moon, I would prefer to, by the October seventh motion that citizens pleasing the full council. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. My name is Cliff Moon, and I reside at twenty-nine, twenty-five East Street Court Northeast. And first of all, let me, well, may I pro tem, members of the council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, let me first wish you a Merry Christmas and very happy holidays, so I have that opportunity to do this. I also want to say first that I appreciate the City Council's acknowledgement this evening of my objection made on December fourth to the motion, which has to do with the citizens addressing the council prior to the meeting, which I objected was out of order, given it was not on the agenda. I think you've rectified that very nicely tonight, and I will appreciate the conduct in this meeting in a lot of ways, though it's a very simple meeting tonight, and I understand that. I rise to address the council, as I have in the last two meetings, on the subject of that motion approved by this council on October the second, two thousand and twelve, in which this council voted unanimously to quote, "allow any resident of Hickory who would like, subject to the normal rules of decorum, to speak before the council," unquote. Also, as also stated in that motion, this opportunity for our citizens to speak was to be quote, "prior to voting on second readings, the consent agenda or departmental reports," unquote. As you can verify for yourselves from the approved minutes on that October the second meeting, there was nothing in that motion to suggest or otherwise imply that this motion was to apply to that meeting only, or that a new motion would be required at each subsequent meeting of the council. This is, this was why I stated on December fourth that I believe the motion that you corrected was made, that meeting was out of order. The second reason I challenged that procedure was that I observed the motion as requested by Mayor Wright at meetings since October, since the October meeting, had been inconsistent and had not received formal consent as an item quote, "not appearing on the agenda," as you corrected tonight, and I really appreciate that. I have stated previously that as a citizen, I am satisfied with the ends in this situation, but not the means. After neither Mayor Wright nor the council quote, "got back to me" at the next meeting, which was the December fourth meeting, as had been stated in the previous minutes, and as the mayor had indicated, after my objection was dismissed without discussion, I chose not to challenge anyone further on this, on this, on December the fourth. I thought it was incumbent to, upon me, to be more certain of the basis for rules of procedure before raising any further questions or challenges. I therefore inquired of our able city attorney, Mr. Crone, as to the parliamentary basis for determining correct procedure for city council. I was told that except for when prescribed by ordinance or policy, that the standard was Roberts Rules of Order. I understand that to be as he has told me. If concerning the mayor's motion of October second, there is an applicable ordinance or previous approved policy, I respectfully request that I be made aware of such ordinance or policy, and if none exists, I respectfully request that I be directed to where in Roberts, a simple main motion passed unanimously does not apply to all subsequent council meetings until it is either amended or repealed by subsequent actions of the same council. Again, I Again, I do not raise these questions and concern, and may I, may I continue, please? Again, I do not raise these questions and concerns to question the motives or good intentions of the mayor or any of you other council members at all. Again, I am in favor of citizens being able to speak before votes are taken on items on the agenda. The issue of correct and appropriate procedure, however, is not a negligible matter for any governing body, in my opinion. I, and I'm sure you, believe in government well crafted, as well as other things. My substantive concern is that the council's present approach, allowing citizens to speak to items on the agenda before, excuse me, before the council votes, is presently determined solely by whether the mayor or another council member decides or remembers, as y'all have done well recently, to make such a motion. As I have indicated, this is not consistent with the motion passed unanimously on October the second. I should also point out that the approved minutes of October the second further indicate that all of your subsequent discussion that evening assumed an ongoing process, and it would be inaccurate to suggest otherwise. The record is clear in the minutes. Secondly, and finally, the present procedure creates a situation where you are all potentially, potentially, I'm not suggesting you're doing this at the moment, I'm suggesting that the potential for governing by fiat, rather than on the basis of established policy or proper parliamentary procedure, exists. What if, because the mayor or others on the council at a given meeting decide that they do not want to hear from the citizens prior to the council's voting because an issue is controversial or because of some other political consideration? Not saying that this has happened, I'm just saying what if? Then, as it now stands, you could just, quote, "forget," unquote, to ask for the motion, and then no one gets to speak prior to the vote. Even if such an oversight is unintended, it will appear to the citizenry as political. At all levels, we are supposed to be a government of laws, not of men. With my apologies to the ladies. This is why I urge you, indeed implore you, if you truly wish to allow citizen input before you vote on agenda items, as all of you have clearly indicated you do, please make this opportunity a regular part of your agenda in the future. Thank you for your time, and again, wish you Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Uh, little comments? I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, uh, particularly to our staff and our citizens that come regularly. I know that I get calls in regularly, I know all the SEDD calls about how, what a great job that our staff does. I, I got one of those recently, and I, I get them very frequently, and I'm just going to say thank you to our staff, and, uh, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and, uh, I'll just, the seat goes to next year in this meeting, so I'll get to close out the last meeting of two thousand and fourteen.
I'd like a man not on the agenda to be present.
Okay.
And the move, I can say right now.
Okay. Motion, second. Motion by Ms. Lell, second by Mr. Mice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I, I'd move that council convene, um, a group to decide the language and the, uh, actual, um, appropriateness of, of gathering citizen, not appropriateness, I think it's very appropriate, gathering citizen's input at the beginning of the meeting, but I would, I, I'd like to, that the council, legal, a subcommittee of council, um, involving the mayor, meet with the legal staff to, uh, to get that correct, so it runs smoothly and understandably, and with, um, um, and understand, and fairly to, uh, the citizens.
I'll second. I'll second.
Any further statements?
And I'll, I'll be on that committee.
I'm going to be on the committee, officially. Uh, if you have more than the majority, if you have four, or, or, all those meetings need to be advertised and be covered, uh, I would suggest that we, certainly just do a period, and, 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 uh, the, the staff, uh, the, the staff not be.
That's good. So, and, 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 Barry.
And I'd like to bring my, uh, uh, because I've been through, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the council members are about new business. Uh, I think that there's no one that's ever certain here, was, that even believe in consistency and being open and transparent. Uh, and I think this is raised a question that we need to, um, discuss and come to some, um, resolution.
My, 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 my.
I wouldn't kind of take care of, we have one more.
Yeah, and my, my vision would be that the subcommittee can get together, consult with legal, and, and, and gather whatever is what they want, and then bring a recommendation to full council for consideration, and, and we're not.
Any other discussion?
Okay, that was motion, and the second. You gonna vote all out?
Second by Ms. Patton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Would you like to go ahead and, uh, tell you what we told the subcommittee?
We've got two volunteers.
I move, uh, Ms. Patton, Ms. Fox, Mayor Wright, in abstention.
Oh, you're not going to be on with me? Oh, well, I just wondered that you brought me up.
I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly satisfied that, that those three of them.
Put that.
Great suggestion.
There we are. So is that a motion?
That is motion.
Second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is a motion made by Mr. Lell, I second it, and, 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 all right, any other field comments? Motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Salute.